Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our December 12th, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. Barbara, would you please take the roll call?
Chairman Kurtz.
Here.
Ms. Corning.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Where's him?
Ms. Vino.
Here.
Mr. Maximar.
Here.
And Ms. Cannon.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is we have two public hearings. First one is the Manitowoc Wetland Permit. Madam Secretary, have you sent notices to the paper and to the neighbors?
The for Manitowoc and for Manitowoc Home, the public notice was published in the November 29th Somers Record, and letters went to flooding property owners. They were mailed out on 11/28. Who got it?
Thank you.
Hello, Tom.
Okay. What we'll do is if you guys just want to give a brief synapsis of it, I'll hear board member comments, and then I'll open it up to the public, okay? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the Manitowoc Wetland Permit. I'm sorry, didn't know what this is. It's an application for a wetland permit and stormwater management and erosion and sediment control permit by Peter J. Gregory, P.E., for Mr. Phil Manitowoc for installation of an 18-by-40 in-ground pool in the wetland buffer. It's located at 76 Mosman Avenue, and it's in an R-80 zone. Sorry.
That pretty much summarizes what we were looking to do.
Right.
We are looking to construct that pool behind an existing detached garage and barn, 18 feet wide, 40 feet long. And this entire project area, as you mentioned, is within our regulated wet system.
Sure.
I think that as part of this application, one of the concerns that we had were two large trees, maple trees, that were located to the rear of the pool. We've indicated those, but there can't be in drip edge.
Right.
There was one on the front, and we've been able to demonstrate on this plan that we can keep all of our disturbance away from those trees and just keep it concentrated within that area just behind the barn. In terms of our stormwater runoff, we are prepared to install or construct a rain garden, which is just adjacent and a little bit downhill in elevation from our pool area. And what we were looking to do was to capture some of the roof runoff from that existing garage, because right now those have downspouts that are just dumping right onto that surface and finding their way through. And we want to come up with a comparable area with the barn to offset what our impervious surface associated with the pool will be. So we're going to capture that and treat that just downhill, just to the, I guess would be to the east of that area. All of our excavation, our cuts in for that site, for the most part, will be used and spread to fill in and build up that area around the pool. Any excess material will be taken off-site. We're not looking to spread it anywhere else on the property, just working within our area of disturbance. The other concern that we had was related to our drainage easement. We have a stormwater easement that's capturing and treating runoff from Mosman Ave. On this plan, our updated plan, we are showing that easement area, a larger area in the front, which is our sediment basin, which is capturing the water initially off the road, and then the 10-foot-wide easement that's running to the rear of the site, piped to a treatment area located to the rear of the site, which was some of the concerns in terms of the maintenance and some of the work that's going to be involved in that area. We are going to keep those separate from our application. If there's any questions about what we're looking to do, for the most part, everything that we've shown here is what we've discussed during our site walk and in our last presentation we were there.
Can you remind me of the construction of the walls that surround the
Yes.
pool area?
So the grade that's, the elevation just behind the barn is about 2 to 3 feet higher than the area where the pool is proposed. Our intention was to install a row of boulders along the, I guess, the outline of our area here, which we will fill up against to keep that elevation up high.
So no excavation down? No excavation down for footings? You're just going on top of the existing?
That's correct. We will key those into the soil.
Thank you.
Yes.
Pete, where does boulders come in from?
Probably from Wattenham. Because what we try to do is, is to find native stones that are similar in color to those that would be used locally, as opposed to something, say, like blasting rock that looks incompatible with a natural setting.
Joe or Saretu, any comments you want to make on this?
Well, I mean, our comments that we've talked about is the rain garden. We've got a modification of the easement that we talked about, right? I think that where we're at right now is, coming in here, I didn't know how they're going to handle this, because we haven't seen this plan yet, you know, we haven't seen this stuff, but I think that because it's been presented to the public, you know, I would be comfortable with the board closing the public hearing, but I would want to spend some time going over the final details before we voted on the resolution, and maybe we can do that next month. To me, the issue is of the stormwater and the easement, and that, to me, is, and, you know, now understanding the wall, I probably just want to see detail of that and understand that.
Absolutely, we can provide that. We didn't make any modifications to the easement. What we're showing on this is what was filed and on record, which
We talked about maybe in the few, providing means, looking at the easement language to see if there, and we're going to look at two things, as my recollection, is, one is to make sure that the town can access that
Absolutely.
and maintain it from the road without having to destroy the applicant's property. And number two, if we're going to modify the easement, I know the applicant wanted to make sure that they could plant on the top, that we can do gold as part of that easement.
Well, I think that may work to our advantage, because the easement doesn't exactly follow the property line. It's set in a little bit. So there is, I think, some area along the property line to get some of those plantings and not compromise the access to the back.
So we'll just have to make sure that, the only thing I want to make sure is that Tommy can get off the road, off Mosman, into that easement without having to traverse the, that up-front, you know, kind of
Basin.
more bang, your basin.
Yes, and I'm not sure if that's possible.
We, we had
So I was thinking, I don't know, maybe we've got to make it an extra 20 feet wider so that the only part that they're kind of, because otherwise it's tough for us to get in there.
Do you think he'd want to drive all the way to the back, or just be able to pull off and then walk and carry equipment back and forth?
I think
Because there's a well. We noticed that the well does fall
Yeah.
within the
That, that well that's located right here, inside the access easement, actually, and if we can
Just, you know, I just want to make sure, I mean, obviously, having been back there maintaining it, I hope that he's going to have better access to the, to that in the future.
The, the area along that property line that we're discussing is fairly heavily treed in at the moment, as you can see here. This runs along the line. The area of concern is sort of densely built in with normal wetland growth, as we know, nature takes over when there's been no, no, nothing going on. What we had suggested and talked to the fellow town engineer, or consultant, or the engineer, was the concept that we've got some fairly dense shrubs right behind the garage to be removed in this area right here, a fairly small patch, and since we were going to bring a chipper in just to
Right, I understand what we're doing for this round of maintenance, and we appreciate the cooperation of the applicant while you have some people to work together on that. I'm thinking of five years from now, right? So five years from now, when those trees that we're going to cut down or remove are now this big again, how is he going to get the chipper in then? I don't want him to have to feel like he has to drive across, we don't have an easement to go across the lawn, so the only way to get in is over the easement. And I just want to make sure he can actually access that, that he can actually access the easement. I don't know how wide the easement was drawn the way that it was, with really no accessibility?
Well, it was, the way it was designed
There's no accessibility.
the accessibility on it is relative.
Is that another word?
There's no accessibility. There's no accessibility.
When you look at it from the, from the roadside, because there are some fairly large trees right in this area here, as well as, as some, add some undergrowth.
Right, but how is he going to get in to maintain this in the future? Given those circumstances you just mentioned, how does he get in to maintain this? How does he get in to make sure the basin is maintained five years
I don't know what the original concept was.
And neither do I. I wasn't the engineer at the time, but as I sit here today, I say, we're going to approve, well, we should probably try to clean this up, and that's, that's not, I don't think it's, I just think we just work that out between now and the next meeting, and you'll have your resolution.
Could we do that separate from the approval?
Is that why you're looking to get in the ground for now?
We'd like to start early on.
I thought at the, I thought the last meeting we said we were going to keep these two
That's my
separate.
No, what we're going to keep separate is the current maintenance, right?
Okay.
The current maintenance activities that are going to happen now, we're keeping separate. But the future access is something that we can potentially handle that in a resolution that says
To the satisfaction.
to the, you know, that they could proceed with, you know, prior building permit to one thing, prior CO, maybe clean up the easement. Like, we can write the resolution that way so that you're not held up.
That would be
And the only other way that we could proceed based on this meeting would be the board to feel comfortable with, with four-chairman approval, four-chairman signature, once I give the green light to do that. If the board is comfortable to do that, that's the action we can take this evening, but you're not going to be able to get this signed until Pete and I get our heads together on the stormwater side and make sure that we're comfortable on that. I don't think that should take long to do, could probably get that wrapped up by the end of this week, right? Or, you know, early next.
Uh huh.
And then, once I get John the green light and providing the board is comfortable, he'll be able to sign the resolution and allow you to pull a building permit to get started, and then we'll just have to make sure that the easement is addressed before you get your CO.
I personally, I feel very comfortable with this applicant and their professional staff. I think they've done everything we've asked them to do
Yes.
above and beyond.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was impressed.
Yes, and you've provided a means by which
Right.
we can accomplish taking care of the, the access.
Okay. Any other board member comments or questions before I open up to the public?
Yep.
Open it up to the public. Anybody like to speak on this matter? No? Yes, come on.
How far
Just come on, just come on up to the mic, please.
I don't know about this project, but I'm an ex.
Okay, well, just into the mic, just, you just have to introduce yourself, please.
I'm just curious how far into the buffer you're going.
They're in the
You're in the, the whole thing is in the buffer?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Right, and for your benefit, the mitigation, what Mr. Gregory was talking about was, you know, obviously, when somebody's doing work in the buffer, we require a certain level of mitigation. So not only that, that they need to manage the aspects associated with their application, but to provide some additional mitigation for doing the work inside of the buffer, and that mitigation is going to be the treatment of the roof area, right? That right now runs untreated into the wetland, over only that grass strip, where now we're going to put it into a rain garden in order to improve the water quality of that, and I believe that that's an acceptable level of mitigation, given the level of disturbance that we're
So where the, where that building is, where the pool is, at what point does it start to be in the buffer?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
The whole thing's already been
Everything's already in the buffer. The whole is in the buffer.
Yes, well, I just
The wetland is probably 25 feet away, 30 feet away from where this pool is.
Yeah, well, just a reminder, I know when we set up rules about these and codes about wetland buffers, just reminding the board that buffers were intended to protect wetlands
Correct.
and any intrusion into the buffers, then, you know, becomes an issue, not only to people living in that space, but then there's more encroachment as people go into the buffers.
That's why we have mitigation.
That's why we have mitigation, and also there is, there are other elements which you've missed, which is this general area that it's in. The town has an easement across this beautiful property to maintain its road
Got it.
and other elements of the town that are below this. And so they're, this property owner is doing a lot to mitigate over and above what they're doing here.
Yeah, on an area that's already been encroached.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
I was just curious.
Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Any more board member comments?
I just, I have a question, I have a question, Joe. When I went on a site walk, you were talking about some access from the road into the easement. When I was there, there didn't, there didn't seem to be any possibility of getting access to that. I mean, there was a big basin, and there were trees, I mean, it
Right, the basin itself, and those trees are really not supposed to be there. That's the piece that has to be cleaned up, right?
Yes.
Right.
The maintenance has got to come off of the road, and we've got to take a look at where are those trees and where that basin is, to make sure that we draw those easement lines so Tommy can go across. Now, I'm hoping we don't have to wind up drawing them across the middle of these, this family's property, you know, in the middle of their front lawn.
Yeah, but
If that's the only place we can get access to the back, that's probably where we're going to have to do.
Right, I mean, that, that's what it looked like to me, that there was, no, unless you were planning to
It'd be nice if we could, if we could work with the neighbor next door, because it's very easy to maybe get access to that, but I don't think that's going to happen.
No.
Because, I mean, to, to, you know, you would have to fill in half that basin, rip out half the trees, and put in a bridge to get
Over the basin right next to Mosman.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think we're going to have to go around that basin.
Yeah, it just seemed like it was inaccessible.
Yeah, that's why the question of the easement came up, because maybe, and one of the reasons why it hasn't been maintained is because you can't get in.
You can't get in.
Right? And we need to rectify that as part of this application.
Good luck.
I'll make a motion, and then we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How does the board feel about working on a resolution with the caveat that you guys will agree on how the, oh, I'm sorry, Saretu, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. On how the easement is going to be handled.
Right, so I would suggest that, that the board approve the project for signature of the chairman upon concurrence and, from myself, from the consulting town engineer, that all issues have been addressed.
I can go along with that.
Okay, it's fine.
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm traveling today from Monday. Do you want to read that one again? Shoot me an email, shoot me an email, shoot me an email tomorrow, and I'll get a little picture down for Monday.
Barbara, I already asked you, you sent the notices for both of these applicants. Okay. Next on our agenda is also a public hearing for North County Homes. It's a proposal to resub, it's a re-subdivision of two existing lots, one containing the existing family, single-family house, and the second lot being a vacant landlot, lot. There's special permits needed for stormwater management and erosion and sediment control, steep slopes and tree preservation. The existing single houses proposed to be removed, and two new houses are to be constructed. The houses will be served by public water and private septic systems. The lots are located at 3 Cardinal Way, and they're in the R-40 zone. For the record, we've received a memo from the Open Space Committee, and also from a resident named Margaret Smith. Evening.
Evening. John Correll, representing North County Homes. You've seen this several times. I think we addressed most of Joe's comments previously. Last issue was stormwater treatment off the driveways in the house, and I see from the Open Space comment letter, they're looking for rain gardens, and we intended to do infiltrators and a combination of rain gardens. We're doing, we're in the middle of having the health department inspect the deep holes and the perk tests. We did the deep holes, the soils are fine. The perk test is tomorrow for the septic system. The Open Space letter referenced the Paxton soils. They are Paxton, they're from the Web Soil Survey. The deep holes indicated all sandy loam, good soil, so we don't expect to see any problems with the septic systems.
Okay. Before board member comments, Joe, Saretu, you have any comments?
I mean, there's been no additional submittals since, since the last time we met. My comments would be consistent with what we had last time. You know, we obviously got the open space, and, you know, that was the item that we were going to work on, is, is addressing this and controlling the limited disturbance, and we're going to take a little look at that. So there's no additional comments, and I think that the ones that are laid out are those that remain to be addressed at this point.
Okay, Saretu?
Yeah, same thing.
Any board member comments before I open it up to the public?
No.
Anybody from the public would like to speak on this, on the North County Homes? No?
Just say
Yes, come on up, please.
Chairman, did you actually open the public hearing? I know you've read the agenda, I, 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 okay, just want to make sure.
I'm Jesse Weiner, I'm a neighbor, and I just want to say I fully support this project. The Festos have been great neighbors, they've always been building their own house, they've complied to everything that the town wished, and they built a beautiful house, and I expect them to do the same on this project, too. So I think all the neighbors kind of support them, and you can see we have a few here that came out for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, on that, on that, it's so nice to see people come out in support of something every now and then.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
We usually only hear the other side.
Right. Anyone else?
I support it, too.
Thanks, Ricky.
Not the hospital, you know.
Yeah. Board member comments? I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so
Yeah, I think, I think we should direct staff to develop a resolution for consideration of this.
Okay.
And I'd like to make some progress on some of the stuff before that resolution is finalized.
Sure, I was holding off on the design of the infiltrators for the perk tests.
Okay.
But now that they're suggesting rain gardens, I'll get that to you within the next week.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, then, I guess we'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, so we have to vote on that?
Yes, wait.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck on the perk test.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next, we have a series of one, two, four time extensions. The first is the Merritt Park Estates. This is their 13th 90-day time extension for the amended conditional final subdivision plan, tree preservation, steep slopes, and wetland permits. The dates are from December 4th, 2018, up to and including March 4th, 2019, pursuant to Town Law, Section 276(c) and Section 150-13m of the Code of the Town of Somers. Somebody would please come out and buy some of this property for the man Cenise, they'd be most appreciative, yeah. It's located at the East Lee Side of Level Street with access to the subdivisions from the new road off of Robert Martin Boulevard. And if, Saretu, if I'm not mistaken, the town engineer is out there on regular visits, right? Nothing has changed?
Nothing's been brought to my attention.
No. Board comfortable with the grandeur of this extension?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
So, so originally, I just want to make sure, 13 extension, I just want to make sure my margins are aligned, but it's really, you haven't filed a plat because we're working on, you've done the basic infrastructure, you haven't filed a plat because you don't want to file a plat until you
Well, there was a few problems. The surveyor passed away.
Can you pull my phone?
Yeah, why don't you go up, Ricky or John? Just, why don't you go up, if you would, please?
It was something like that, wasn't it?
You did dress, Chuck.
You want to file the final, right? And that's why we keep extending it, because what you do that, you got to pay the fees and
No, it wasn't just that, the surveyor passed away. Another more recent one was when Sarah Chills wanted an easement on your property, which we couldn't give, and I guess he was talking to Roland, and Roland said he, he's okay with it not being on your property, it wasn't on ours, which it's already done. So we're past that, we're, we're really close, we're almost there.
Okay.
Excellent job at ventriloquism.
Yeah.
The handsome guy stood up here.
The jury's out on that.
So it's still only the, the one house standing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Sorry for making you stand up.
Can I say that?
Yeah.
All right, so a motion for the extension as I presented it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Tamara Combine. We're also in receipt of a, a letter from our town planner, and this is a request for a third 90-day extension, final subdivision re-grant, and the dates are from December 10th, 2018, up to and including March 9th, 2019, pursuant to the same Town Law, Section 276(c) and the Town Code, Section 150-13m. This property is located on a Wesley Side of Level Street, and is in an R-40 zone. Same thing, regular visits. Nothing's changed.
I'm just kidding, what's the, what's the holdup on you?
We're just wrapping up.
Okay. No objection.
Any other board member comments?
I have a comment, but I won't make it.
Okay. Are you keeping us in suspense?
Well, Tamara Combine, I, I can visualize where it is. That's a, was a difficult subdivision.
Yes, it was.
And I'm struck by the fact that it is almost up against the northern end of Lincoln Hall property. Is that a correct way to describe it?
It's close to it.
Close to it, yeah. And 300 acres of Lincoln Hall property is being considered for sale. That's the only comment I was going to make.
Interesting, when, when did that come up for sale?
That was in the minutes that are sent to us that we share. The Open Space Committee was visit, when they found out, was visiting, because they want to see if they can get their hands on the railroad right of way that runs up through there.
Little way back.
That's all I know about it. Yeah, I mean, real estate is supposedly a private matter, but it was in our minutes, so.
So I'll make the motion for the, for the re-grant of the time extension as I presented it. There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Next is the Mitchells, Gary and Ann Mitchell, the four-lot conservation subdivision. It's a request for the second 90-day time extension and a re-grant of a four-lot conservation subdivision, three of which are new building lots and one existing lot on a 7.1 acre parcel. The dates are from December 20th, 2018, up to and including March 19th, 2019, in accordance with 150-13m of the Code of the Town of Somers. Each lot is going to be served with individual wells and septic system. And for the record, this property is located on the west side of Tomahawk Street, Route 118, in the R-40 zoning district. We're in receipt of a letter from Tim Allen from Bibbo Associates for this request. Do you have any comments?
I have no objection. Again, I'm just curious, Tim, what's, what's the holdup? Again, I'm just curious, Tim, what's, what's the holdup?
Um, the Festos are actually building, Joe and Mike are building the structure. Again, it's a matter of, of a plot after the fact. That's what we're...
The curbs are in, the...
Yeah, I can see them.
Yeah, the curbs are in, the drainage is in, the subbase on, on the roadway is in, but it's not paved yet.
So, it's a very similar issue, I think, to the beginning, to how we started the, the...
The Merritt Park, yeah.
Basically, put the roads in as, as private, as, as, as if it was a single lot. And then you fire, you're gonna file the...
Except they built a house, we haven't built a house.
Okay, all right.
But it's the same concept.
Okay, no objection.
So, just as a matter of course, why is this worded differently in that it is not pursuant to Town Law, Section 276C?
Closer.
Well, it is.
It is, it's just not written here, okay.
Good field. We're gonna miss you.
I know, we're gonna miss you too.
When the town gets a helicopter, they'll fly you back and forth.
And there were the helipads you could land.
Yeah.
Close by.
Yeah, nearby, just up the street.
Take off in the lake.
All right, so, made the motion for this, uh, it's from 20, December 20th, 2018, up to and including March 19th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And our last, um, time extension is for Xena subdivision, Stevens subdivision. It's their fifth 90-day time extension for conditional final subdivision approval on stormwater management and erosion sediment control permit. And the dates for this are from December 11th, 2018, up to and including March 10th, 2019, in accordance with 150-13M of the Code of the Town of Somers. And I guess I should say also then, um, also with, um, Town Law, Section 20, 276C. It's located on the corner of Route 100 and Route 138, and it's in an R80 zoning district. And same thing, right, Saret, regular visits?
Tell me what's the status on this one?
Uh, we're waiting on the plat. As you know, Tom Donnelly, who, you know, passed away, Bob Baxter's been working on the plat. And that should be done, should have been done already. We're ready to go to the home of the plat. She wants to follow the plat.
Okay.
You know, and you haven't begun any infrastructure or construction work out there. This isn't another...
No, no, no.
I didn't think so.
Just took the trees down.
It looks nice. I opened it up like this.
Yeah, really good.
Really beautiful house. I've been driving the town for 25 years and never saw the front of that house. Beautiful.
Yes, yes.
We should get, start a lottery, and how many more?
People not crashing into the wall.
We should start a lottery, and how many more times that's gonna be hit?
And I do have to say...
I should bring in a public...
I really, I really hand it to them that they, they built, they continue to put in dry stone walls.
I know.
They're actually a little more forgiving if a car hits them. And I'm just surprised they can do that. But thank goodness, because I might be the next one to hit it, so...
If it was me, out of spite, I would have put something a little more sturdy, just teach them a lesson. Okay, so, a motion for this, um, extension from, uh, excuse me, from December 11th, 2018, up to and including March 10th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim?
Yes.
Happy Christmas.
Same to you, thanks.
Merry Christmas.
And last on our agenda is, um, an informal appearance from the Somers Animal Hospital. I believe what they're looking for is a rear access door, stairs, and a dormer for attic storage. The property is located at 352 Route 202, and it's in the BHP District, which is Business Historic Preservation District. This tonight's an informal, for the record, is an informal appearance from them.
Evening. My name is Steve Gergachech, I'm the architect on this project. This is Dr. Martin Randall, and he is one of the owners of the Somers Vet Clinic, or Hospital. And what we're looking to do is to simply have attic storage in the rear of the building. Currently, they have a ladder in one of the exam rooms that has to come down. It's very difficult to store files and, and such up, up inside this attic space. In the center of the building is the only possible way to put this attic, uh, storage space because there are trusses on either side. So, what we came up with was around the back of the building to put up a dormer access and a, a small little set of stairs and deck to, to get into so we could just use this attic storage. You can see here on the plat...
You're probably not gonna want to hear this, but they still have to go to the ARB Board, don't they? Because it's in the BHP.
We've been in front of the ARB Board, and we were approved.
Good, okay.
That's good. I have a question, what about the architect, the, it's a historic district?
Yeah.
That's what the ARB does.
No, I understand that architecturally, but what about, there's a, I, I'm not good on names and titles. The Historic Society?
Oh, the Historical Society.
I don't know if that falls into that category that they review it as well. I don't mean to make a problem, I just want to make sure we touch on all bases.
I, I think the main issue is what I put down on your, uh, list here. You know, we don't do a full review on these things when they're informal, but I did feel I needed to review some of this. The issue is, they're in the BHP District. The BHP District is pretty clear, that's what I put down here. Anything like this needs a site plan approval, as minimal as it is. I didn't write the BHP District, I didn't write the regulations or what can be allowed in there, but that's what the code says. So, when you're looking at this, what you have to determine, and that's why I asked them to come, the reason it ended up coming here is because they went to the Architectural Review Board, got an approval, and Denise called me after the fact and said, oh, by the way, does this have to go to planning? And I looked at what it was, and I said, we better take it to the planning board, at least informally, uh, to go over this. The only opportunity that you have to not have them come for this is based on the last paragraph that I wrote here, is that, uh, under Chapter 144, Section 144-2, gives you an opportunity, in some cases, to make an adjustment of regulations. So, this is for the board to determine how it wants to handle this within the BHP District. This is the first time since I've been here that there's actually been a building. I mean, you're adding to the building. It is not visually, uh, changing the environment because it's in the back of the building, which was the purpose, as far as I understand.
What, what external change, can we see, what external changes have been made? Internal?
What we're doing currently...
If you could tilt it just a little more.
Yeah, can, can we see it a little better? No, turn, turn the board.
Turn the board, rotate it a little bit like that. Cool, okay. Thanks.
Currently, you can see the existing back of the building. It's just a flat roof with the HVAC equipment going across the back. Surrounding the back of, of the property is trees. There is no way from the parking lot or from any other building on this lot to see back here. We're basically putting it right in the middle of where we're doing it.
Well, show them what, what you're doing.
It's just a dormer.
What we're doing is just putting in a simple dormer.
Got it.
So that we can come up on some deck stairs, which would be, you know, uh...
And those are all composite?
Composite material of some type, and come up, and we're going to, which we went through with the ARB match, all the existing conditions that are on the building current. So, basically, we're just adding a dormer to get into this empty space.
But that's all, the stairs come off the flat roof? You said to the flat roof and then...
No, no, there's no flat roof.
Cause of the ground.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be like a little back off the door.
It's just basically a little dorm. We're just adding a dormer with the door instead of a typical window.
Got it, got it.
So that he can come back here or, or, once every two or three months, and put some stores in there. If we put stairs on the interior of the building, he loses an exam room.
Yes, yes.
He loses, uh, an office.
Understand, understand.
So, we're not finishing the inside. Right now, it's, it's, it's all open. We're not, we're not heating it, we're not cooling it. We're just asking for a little easier access to be able to, to use the storage.
Is the back of the property sloped at all, or is it flat?
Right, right where, right where the building is, it's flat for about 30 feet. Oh, not 30 feet, I apologize, 12, about 12 feet. And then it goes on at a slow pace.
Okay.
Right now, currently, there are drains back there.
At the, at the 12-foot point, or at the back of the building?
At the back of the building, we have. Currently, there are drains, I think right here is one of them. And so, so that would not be affected because the deck we're putting in will allow the water to drop through. It's not a closed deck, it's, it's a deck like everyone has in the back of the yard with the nail spacer in it. We're putting in two, two 12-inch diameter footings. And, and basically just making a little deck over the back of that, just so it would be easier to access that space.
A staircase and a platform.
Yes.
Not even, a staircase and a platform. Not a deck.
Not a deck.
And the dimension to the platform will walk by 6'4" by 5'?
7' by 5?
We, we could reduce the space, I just wanted to make it easy if you're coming up and to turn.
And you want to put the files down while you unload.
You're making, you're making a safe way to get to your storage area.
Exactly.
Is there gonna be any ground treatment between the door that you're adding? Because there's a, you're adding a door, and then they're gonna walk from the door to the bottom of the deck? Like, in the picture below?
Yes.
You've got the door there, but the stairs go down, and then are they exiting?
Yeah, what, what they're going, to exit is right to this level, right here.
Right to that 12-foot ground there?
Are you running a sidewalk there?
I guess what I'm saying, if you put that...
No, what we're gonna do is put gravel down, just to make it easier. I, I believe, Dr. can speak for himself, but you're gonna access it once every two months, just, just to put some stuff up.
So, it's between that...
30 years of medical records.
So, it's between that door there...
And there's no way to get them out of there.
Right.
You got it.
Especially not at our age. It was easier 30 years.
That's why you see it's going up and down.
Yeah, this is age here.
Joe, do they, do they need a, do they need a, uh, a concrete platform for the bottom of the stairs? Or they're just gonna put the stairs into the ground and gravel?
Round, round tubes.
No, yeah.
Round tubes, yeah.
No, no.
Well...
Yeah, he, they're, they're, you're, they're using a sonnet tube for, for the support of the deck.
Well, no, the, the, the sonnet tube's in the support.
For the deck, right. And the, and the base of the stairs.
Well, no, she didn't say that. They're not, they're not, they don't go to the bases there. That's what I'm bringing up the point. Should there be some kind of...
For structural reasons, I don't think we will need it, although I personally think it's a good idea to have a landing. That is something more than just gravel. I would just be a personal... But it wouldn't necessarily have to be, you know...
It could be just a concrete, uh...
Footing, a concrete footing.
Could be concrete clavels.
Could be pavers and bluestone, something like that.
4-inch pavers.
Oh, I would put a 36-inch per code at the end of the stairs. I have to put a concrete slat.
Okay, that's...
That's what we're asking for.
That's what we're asking for.
Is that like whatever fire code implications of putting that in?
No, sorry.
No, okay.
Well, it involves the building inspector, correct?
It's not yet, well, there's, could, not, not planning, but we don't have to have like stormwater or anything like that. It's just a small...
Yeah, it just involves the building inspector, correct?
How much different is this from what Alphorn did a couple of years ago?
Right, that was 100 square feet.
Was it like 140 square hundred, yeah?
Yeah.
But, but...
But that was visible, so we did the same.
That's why we, because of, because of the visibility, right?
It's on the back, yeah.
Yeah, but there's no visibility.
Okay.
Change in pervious surface, right?
Right, yes.
Oh, that's right.
I have only one other question. Personally, I don't think, I don't, I think we should waive it. I mean, that's how I personally feel. I see this as health, safety, and welfare, and they've got it in hand. I don't see why we're involved.
There's no structural change to go.
Yeah, I see that. I have a question. Are you losing a parking spot? Oh, good. There you go. You don't need us. You don't need us.
Simply, I'm...
Your con...
I moved it.
Stuff up there.
Access.
I mean, to me, I think if this, if, if, let's say this came due fresh, you might say, have the same opinion and just say, just go to ARB and get the ARB sign off. We're taking that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think it's, I'm not speaking for the board, I, I think I'm getting a feeling consensus of the board is that, uh, we can waive it.
Well, it's not just a waive.
Huh?
It's not just a waive. You have to make a motion.
Okay.
In accordance with the bottom, I'll state it if I can do that.
Absolutely.
A motion that you find because of special circumstances of this particular case that extraordinary hardship may result from strict compliance with the regulations of the BHP District for site plan approval, uh, that you are adjusting the regulations and that no site plan approval is required.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Yes.
On the, on the grounds that providing a site plan would cost more than the cost of the construction, you might have to go along with it.
So moved.
So moved, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank goodness that this was put in.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this is the exact situation at that.
Right.
And by the way, you know, just, you should know that you're, you're empowered to, it's not like the choice, it's a zero-sum game. The choice is not either we do no site plan review or we do traditional site plan review. You have the ability, as it says in that provision, to adjust the code for you. So, let's say, for instance, it was a different, more complicated application. And, and you thought there was, there was one aspect of the plan you wanted greater detail on. You could say one, and they give us that, but you don't have to do everything else. So, it gives you that flexibility to make sure that you're doing the review you think you should do, but not necessarily...
Not having to go through the resurvey and all that.
Right, right, right.
So, so just so you know, for future reference, it's not like you, it's not like you have to decide, well, I don't want any further review. In this case, I think that was a little decision, but you don't have to do that.
I think these plans gave us that review, Joe.
Yes.
And they gave that, right, those plans were pretty detailed in terms of what they were doing, or isn't it?
Right.
And before we close up, Nancy has a comment that she'd like to get into the record.
Yeah, I have a comment I'd like to get into the record, it's not on the agenda. And, um, it may not be significant, but I just want to do it. It relates to the, um, Town Board is the lead agency on the Somers Academy. And, um, as it should be, the lead agency. And I was going through, um, that's 35 years ago, and not many of us here, no one on the Town Board. And I don't see anybody here who was there then, other than myself and, and Dennis, who, uh, served as chairman of the planning board for part of that application. And, um, what I came across concerned me a little bit. And I wanted to share it with the, with, with the professionals at this meeting as a, as a form, as making it part of the record. And that is, in 1983 October, I assume it was a Town Board meeting, um, they had, the IBM had gotten to the point, I mean, they already had the new zone, and IBM already had their plans submitted for what we have. The four, five-story buildings and the single three-story building that totaled, um, those four 200,000 square foot office buildings, I think they referred to them. And the three-story, 280,000, you don't have to write that down. Point is, it was for 2,700 employees. And of course, pretty much that's what got built up there. So, we all know what's, what's happening, but what caught my eye and the memory that came back and hit me that upset the Town Board at that time, never made the press in a big way, was the following. The site would be developed that way with a view towards the ability to have a future expansion by 820,000 square feet of office space that would allow an additional 2,300 employees. It could more than double. I'm not an engineer, I can't argue that they can't do that. But that was a concern to the Town Board at that time. And of course, they went ahead, they did it, and they were successful and, and what have you. But I just want to share that, that what is there, it's possible to double it.
Right, so what I was, what I'm curious about as you read that, I was, I appreciate you bringing that forward. One of the things that I'm wondering is, now you make me want to read the resolution, but, um, my, my, I remember that there was a requirement to put an extra exit, right, and there were easements off of 684. I have a feeling these two things are connected, is my suspicion, that if they wanted to proceed in that direction, I'm wondering, Mike, I'm curious if that would trigger the requirement to put in...
Yes.
The off-ramp. And if so, given that, the easement and all of the lands associated with the, the ability to create that off-ramp have been, I, my understanding is, has been dispersed or sold by IBM. They may have lost that opportunity to do that in, in the future.
Do they not, do they not transfer automatically with, with the sale?
No, I remember, I, I believe, I remember, they, they came before us and asked for, we had a bond, we asked for, right, I mean, they, I would have to go back and refresh, but, but... but, but-
Yeah, well, it was a concern, and I went and, the only buddy around for me to talk to, other than Dennis, was, is Maureen Devine, and she said, oh my God, yes, I remember, she said, it was a real concern, we moved ahead, we didn't express it publicly. But, um, and the only reason I have it is just because of the role I played back then in, in journalism, but, and there from notes, but, um, but, but I just wanted to share that, that it should be in the back of everybody's head. I don't mean that in a critical way, but to be aware of it. For instance, I think the town board, I know I'm shooting my mouth off, but I think the town board should be very concerned at the moment, and pressure the city, because the city privately has informed the town that they're going to remove the two bridges. And I think the town has every right, not the, not the railroad bridge, but they have every right to the Plum Brook Bridge. That's, that's in New York City code, that's, that's there, since 1877.
I agree, and also, safety associated with the church.
Yeah, well, that's, that's just part of it, and now, I think we have a, we need that, that backup.
But don't you remember they would never provide us with a wetland, uh, uh, plan? Remember?
Yeah, they just never came back, they just never came back.
Yeah, I, I wonder what the-
Well, he wasn't there then.
I wonder what the mechanism is to, um, you know, um, I don't know, are you working with Rick on that bridge? I have nothing to do with that, he hasn't consulted with me at all on the bridge at this point, so.
You might bring-
I'll make sure that I bring it up with Rick at my next, at my next meeting.
Bring it up again, I know that he commented them, he contacted them within the past two weeks, um, okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to, to do that, but I'm, just because you're both here, I didn't wanna have a little private discussion in your office.
Again, I don't know about that, the only thing I'll say is that, uh, there wasn't a site plan for that.
For what?
There wasn't, for whatever you're talking about, so whatever their intent-
The bridge, or the, or the-
No, we're talking about IBM. Whatever their intent was, we, and we now know they're only on a small portion of, wait, let me finish, 723 acres, and we now know they're subdividing, and they have an intention to do other things.